It's pretty so.
I thought it was crazy if somebody wanted to see something tonight.
Well, everybody needs to look at the phone.
That's what I thought, yeah, 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 yeah.
It's a good color on you.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, I realized you probably didn't think that when you took it on this morning, or whenever you went on.
It's an awesome color. Isn't one of those colors that's really good on a lot of people, though? But that is a good color.
But the question is, is your underwear that color too?
That actually was not a question of mine whatsoever.
Thanks.
Yeah, no, no, still not.
Because, because.
Still not.
I believe in coordinate.
Uh-oh. Good thing we haven't called this to order yet.
Okay.
All right. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 on Wednesday, the 30th. This is a special meeting to go over the application review for the candidates for the director's position. As we start the meeting, a couple things. We can go into executive session if we feel that there is a need to discuss qualifications. That being said, I remind all of us, including myself, that if we do go into executive session, we can talk about candidates' qualifications, but we can't make favor or disfavor in closed session that could lead or imply a vote in any way, shape, or form, because we have to do that in public. So, that's just for the record and for each of us, including myself, to remember. So, we had eight total?
Nine.
Nine, thank you. That was my Marine Corps math thing very much for correcting me. Nine total applicants that we all had to review. We used the review pages, and now we are going to set how many we would like to invite to interviews on the 6th. So, that's basically what we're going to go over tonight as we review the candidates and the worksheets that we have. So, are there any questions or comments as we move forward?
No.
After reviewing the nine, in the past, what we've done is we've limited the interviews to, say, the top four or the top six. I think the most we took was six at one point. Having reviewed the nine here is their consensus, or does anybody have an idea of how many they would like to take further on as far as a top number?
I would like to take the top five personally.
Top five?
Yeah.
I do have, I do have, I think, a qualification question for executive session.
Okay.
But, but that aside, I would say, I think five makes sense to me.
And I don't know if I can discuss this right now, but I know we've said that we were going to do Skype interviews. If by some chance, the top five were local people, local as in, you know, where you can drive here, I would, I would like to see us do it in-person interviews versus Skype interviews at that point. I don't know how we make that happen, but.
For any, or if it's only all?
It would have to be all or none. In the past, we've done all or none, and the reason we did Skype is because we didn't want to give one person an unfair advantage or disadvantage. I think that's an option for us to discuss tonight if we, in fact, come to that point and have local.
Okay, gotcha, okay.
All right.
Just a, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Five works out great for me, as a matter of fact, as a guy, yeah, it's five.
Five?
Five is fine with me.
All right, well, preliminary number of five, we're gonna need to go into executive session to have a qualification question, and we can do that in accordance with the RCW. Did you find the exact one?
No, I can't. I'm positive. I had to look it up for these minutes, so I don't understand why I can't find it, but I can't find it. Didn't we go into executive session last meeting? Did we have a special meeting?
Yes, we did.
We did.
And we did.
We, we perused resumes.
Okay, great.
Yeah, independently.
And so, it would be the same RCW and the same.
Sure, we're going to look up later.
Yeah, what were we, and what were we talking about?
Candidates' qualifications.
Oh, here it is, here it is.
Okay, thank you.
So, in accordance with RCW, 42.30.110G.
So, we will go into executive session for...
I think five minutes.
So, we'll go, we'll go for five minutes?
Yeah.
Because we can always go longer, not sure.
It may, it may be that it's, it's, it's not appropriate, but I would, I would prefer that menu.
Okay. So, we'll go into executive session for five minutes to discuss the qualifications, starting at 7:06. All right, we'll call the meeting back into order at 7:12 after executive session. I would like to suggest that as we move forward, that we give, we said five, correct?
Yes.
We take our top five in alphabetical order, and we'll go around this table. I'll start with the Senior Commissioner from the state of Indiana.
All right, this is in alphabetical order.
By last name, right?
Yes, by, by last name.
Okay.
By last name.
There's a middle name.
There's always one.
Yes.
Go ahead, Steve.
Eric Gerber, TJ Harmon Fisher, Tara Heisen, Voice W. Jeffries, Stephen D. McCaslin.
Okay.
I will take the easy road and concur with the top five.
All right.
And we're the same.
And Commissioner Pierce?
I gotta disagree, and that's only because they were not in alphabetical order according to what they, the names that were listed on there. I will go with Eric Gerber for the role. It's the same.
It's the same.
Like, it's, 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 it's.
What school did you go to? Alabama or Alaska? It's like.
Fish, F becomes for J, R.
I went with their last list.
The first.
She has two last names.
Okay, my list is a little different.
Okay.
So, TJ Harmon Fisher, Tara Heisen, Steve McCaslin, Mohammed Mustafa Vinassab, and Patrick Nally.
Nally. All right. And then, I have TJ Harmon, Tara Heisen, Mr. Jeffries, Steve McCaslin, and Patrick Nally also.
Can we do a point of clarification here?
Yes.
Can you just say it, Tara? It's Heisen, isn't it? Okay, sorry, I just, this, your poor name gets butchered in here constantly, so I just...
So, Tara Heisen.
It's what you're concentrating on. No worries.
Tara Heisen.
Let's just call it, we'll just repeat Tara from there.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Could you repeat yours one more time?
Yes, sir, I would. It's Ms. Harmon, Ms. Tara. Got that right. Mr. Jeffries, Mr. McCaslin, and Mr. Nally. So, without any doubt, we have Mr. Har, TJ, I'm sorry TJ so much, Ms. Harmon, Ms. Heisen.
Well, not necessarily.
And Mr. Jeffries, we all agree on.
Well, because, how high on the list are some of those people?
I, I don't know.
Because, that's my, if, if...
So, what we're gonna do first?
If everyone had TJ, but it's like, is TJ your number one or two, or is she your number five? See, does that not make?
So, what I was gonna suggest?
Okay.
Was that we talk about those that we have different first.
Ah, okay.
The three that we have different.
Sneaky.
And then, go back and see if we want to talk about the others.
So, what you're saying is that?
Let's talk about Mr. Gerber.
Boys, Tara, and TJ, you're all, all five of us had those two.
That's correct. And then, Mr. Gerber, Mr., and I, I will really slaughter this gentleman's name if I don't.
Just call Mohammed.
And Mr. Mohammed.
I think that'd be acceptable.
And Mr. Nally.
Can I have a key tag, please? Sorry.
Yeah?
You're just doing your job, man.
There you go, bud.
Thanks for being diligent.
Um, lost my train of thought there. Yes, so, Mr. Gerber, Mr. Mohammed, and Mr. Nally were the three that were different.
May I ask you a question?
Yes, sir, you may.
So, you said Eric, Stephen, Mohammed, and Patrick, those four we're looking at, right? Is it safe to say the other, the other two, they're, they're gone, right? And that would be John Morehouse and Alyssa Sezaf, yeah, S-E-A-Z-A-F-A-B-O. Are those two?
Does anybody have any?
Can we put those two aside then?
I concur with that.
I would say momentarily, but, I mean, if, if, it depends on the process.
All right, thank you.
So, and, so let's look at Mr. Gerber first. We're going alphabetically, by the way. So, there are no... Of course you may, sir.
Since, since three of us had Mr. McCaslin and Mr. Gerber, and one of you had Mohammed and one of you had Patrick, why don't we, maybe you explain why you prefer one of these two over these two gentlemen? Since three of us picked these two, does that make sense?
All right.
I don't think it does, and the reason is similar to, the weighting, right? So, I mean, it depends on what our holistic process is, because if we're saying, if we're taking at some point our scores into account, then...
Which we should.
Then, then it, then, then it's not an either-or.
Okay.
Right.
I mean, it makes it more difficult.
Yes, it does. So, there's two ways to proceed. We can either, the way I see it, we can sit here and go through each of those candidates, or we can include those three with the rest moving forward.
There's, and there actually were, I thought, four.
I think it's, it's, it would be rather, rather silly, actually. When all five of us agree on these three, to approach it any different than that, they're all three in the top five, and we've all agreed that we're gonna take five.
So, you're making a motion?
I would like to make a motion that Boys W. Jeffries, Tara Heisen, TJ Harmon Fisher, that they are offered the opportunity to interview with us.
Jeffries wasn't, he wasn't in my top five. The ones who...
Okay, hold on, stop, stop.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Thank you. So, the motion is?
I would like to kill the motion.
And let the motion die.
Let it die.
Thank you.
And I, but I, I see where you're going, and so, the ones that were, the, the three that everyone was, had in their top five were TJ, I'm gonna, His, His.
Tara.
Tara, thank you, and Steve McCaslin.
You did not have, did you have Mr. McCaslin, Sean?
Yes, he did.
I don't, yeah, I did. I think when you originally said it, you said Jeffries and not McCaslin.
I believe you did, yeah.
Yeah, because I was kind of just notating.
Did I really?
Then, I would like to make a motion that Stephen D. McCaslin, Tara Heisen, and TJ Harmon Fisher be given the opportunity to interview with us at a special board meeting October 6, 2015.
Give a second.
So, we have a motion for Harmon, Heisen, and Jeffries to interview on October the 6th with a second discussion.
Wait a minute, Jeffries or McCaslin?
McCaslin was the motion.
Yeah. McCaslin was the motion, thank you very much, I misspoke. So, Harmon, Heisen, and McCaslin to interview on the 6th. No discussion. All in favor, aye? Motion passes unanimously. All right, that was, so, I believe all three, if I'm correct, are local.
Well, but is our expectation to resolve the other ones now, or is simply to move forward?
Well, we have a motion on the table for...
Well, we passed the motion.
No, no, we passed the motion.
That's correct. We have a motion that's been passed that three, we interview three people.
What?
Yes?
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, Mohammed Mustafa Vinassab, whatever, and he actually got my top score based on his resume. And now, having looked at his resume, I'm not sure he knows who we are or what we do, but...
Can we back up for a second?
Oh.
I, I don't mean that disrespectfully, but, and talk about the process for a moment before we...
Yes, oh, okay.
Because I think we're doing two different things.
My intent was that we were going to interview five.
Okay, yeah.
And, and the thought was that these three would, would advance past this portion, this discussion here, and, and they are, they're locked, for lack of better words.
Yes.
And, and then now...
Now, we can talk about an additional two.
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll open, open the floor up to discuss an additional two candidates.
Thank you.
No, good point, Wendy.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I am open to you guys telling me why Mohammed is not a good candidate.
I just, based on his background, it's like, I thought he had an awesome background in, you know, he's been a park ranger guy for all those years in the same place, and, you know, he didn't get the top score for leadership. I gave him a three, because, you know, he hasn't been in charge of 50 people, but I gave him a five for the dealing with the public, the fiscal planning. He's been doing a budget for that part for, you know, all those years. Strategic planning, gave him four, you know, they have a pool, he's been in charge of that. So, maybe I scored him too high, but it was like, he kinda hit a lot of the, lot of the things, and did I read something that wasn't in there?
I, just to offer, I, I did not see, and perhaps I missed it, but I, I think that he has a wealth of experience as a park ranger.
Yes.
And, and I personally equate that, while I, I value that activity, I, I equate that as a totally different job and skill set. Additionally, I don't, I did not see, for example, I don't see strategic planning, and perhaps I overlooked something. I don't see anything that I would interpret as that. And, and so, for example, while a, you know, manage a $1.6 million, million by annual budget, that doesn't, for me, that doesn't also necessarily mean fiscal planning. That actually means, here's a budget, now manage it. And, and I equate those as, I, I take those as different things. So, that's, that was part of my scoring, for example.
The reason I, I gave a high score for strategic planning is like, you know, and you are exactly correct, maybe he didn't, he just managed, he wasn't, but it's like, more than doubled the total revenue, increased awareness of St. Edward with effective promoting of events, access to media channels, successful lobbying. So, it sounds like he had a plan, and he went out and accomplished it. And, and that just be, might just be me reading into it, something that's not there. You are, you know...
And I guess it, it very well could just be different interpretations of, you know, well, obviously, it's different interpretations of the same information.
Yeah, just because, at a time when the state budget is hurting, you know, he was getting increases and stuff, and it's like, that takes work.
I actually saw the strategic planning as you did, so...
Yeah, okay, and obviously, since he wasn't in your top five, so, you know, like, and it's like, he just, he scored high because I thought he had done this stuff, but it's like, I am not hard over on that. So, I'm fine with him not. That's okay. Do you want to talk about Patrick Nally?
Yeah, well, let's, let's talk about Patrick. I'm looking for Patrick, because I seem to have lost him. But Patrick got lost.
He's a swim guy.
Yes.
Yes, okay, first, let me talk about, actually, I'm gonna bring up Boys.
Ah.
No. Is that somebody else gonna bring it? No.
Eric Gerber.
Gerber, Gerber, Mr. Gerber, that's who I wanted to talk about.
How many people actually know Mr. Gerber?
I do not know Mr. Gerber.
I, I don't know him well, but I know him back, he was, uh, part of the city council.
So, relying on my limited experience, I had some questions about Mr. Gerber's past, and as, and as such, I didn't see, what I didn't see, and I, I don't know where a lot of you saw it, I did not see any... Exactly. No leadership, no managing people or employees, no lobbying for, with the exception of his council time, which I'm sure he did an immense amount of leadership and lobbying. I didn't see much in his past that gave me the impression that he had done a lot of leadership consistently, and it's almost as if he shied away from it as he moved past his council years. And so, that brought a lot of concerns to me, for me.
Yeah, no, that was my major one. He's a chaplain, and so, he, he talks to a lot of people. I gave him really high scores for public customer service, but it's like, experience in management leadership, not really.
I didn't see it.
And fiscal planning, budget building, didn't see that. Or strategic planning, did not see that at all.
Well, I could see some strategic, I see strategic planning for sure, and budgeting, budgeting with the city council.
With the city council.
That was in 2009, over six years ago, and since then, outside of that venue, there isn't much of that. So, it was a concern to me. So, that's why I didn't rate him as high as the others. I know the three of you had him, all three of you had him in your top go, so... The reason I put Patrick in as my top five is because he has a largely aquatic-based resume, background too. That's also his weakness.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's, I would say that, that is his weakness. However, if you look at size of the programs that he managed, it's, they're not small-sized programs. However, there wasn't much as far as dealing with RCWs, dealing with, you know, the, the public outside of what he did in his, dealing with the programs he dealt with, the swim programs he dealt with. So, I saw his strength is he's got a very, very large aquatic background, but, like I said, it's also his biggest weakness.
A lot of dealing with public and customer service, he got total points on that. For me, having to go convince parents, this is where you want to send your kids to school and stuff like that, I thought was a good point. And since he's been in charge of those other swim programs and having to deal with, I would guess he's gotta build a budget, because if he's in charge of a program, and that's his program...
Yes.
You know, that's, he's, he's working on the budget.
And see, on that one, I chose not to, honestly, I chose not to make that assumption. For me, what I tried to do across every, every one of them is if it wasn't mentioned specifically, I tried to maybe give a tiny bit of leeway, but very little, because if it was, or if that was an activity that you participated in and have experience in, it seems like something that you would absolutely mention. I, I don't, I don't recall, I, I don't know what the ad looked like, and I don't know specifically if it, if it targeted things like that. I would hope that it did.
The PD was attached, yes.
Okay, okay. So, so in that, just meaning that some of those things would be known, and so, for me, I think one reason why, or reasons why I did not score this person as highly, again, very experienced in coaching, team management sort of things, but I, I, I didn't see what I think would be maybe a little more well-roundedness represented here, and that, that was my, that was a big concern for me.
Okay.
Well, if we were to talk about Eric first, you know...
Eric Gerber.
Yeah, Eric Gerber. When I looked, when I was considering it, you know, with experience in management, dealing with the public, and all that, but experience in management, specifically in fiscal planning, as well as strategic planning, I was looking at his time on the city council, and, and, you know, I didn't give him as high a scores as someone else, but, but because there has been that time that's elapsed, and I understand that, that, that years have went by since he sat on the city council, but I don't think that you can, you know, forget the fact that, you know, he, you know, he was, he had to do that, and I know it was as a body, but fiscal, and when you look at the, the fiscal planning and the strategic planning, that's, I would think that he has, you know, experience in that, and where I put him is, you know, a four on those, actually. And dealing with the public, I looked at his time as a chaplain. I mean, this is a person, because what we said was soothing unhappy people, and basically building people up. I mean, that's the job of a chaplain, is to, is to build people up, and...
You got max points on that one for me, so...
And, and you know, I, that's kind of where I was with him. If we go down the list, you know, experience in aquatic facility, doesn't have that. A government organization, he's been around the military, you know, with the chaplain and all that, working around the, around the government. Recreation programs, I mean, he was with the Oak Harbor Parks when he was younger, and, you know, I ranked him actually very high, and if I were to look at Patrick, you know, I mean, I really value what he's been able to do, but really what I saw was a swim coach.
Yeah, I don't disagree with that.
And that's pretty much where he was at, and I don't, if you're looking at the base of a person, and, you know, just the knowledge base and their experiences in life, there's so much more here than just swimming and, and swim coaching. And that's why I thought that Mr. Gerber has had just that broader base. You know, he worked on the parks when he was younger. He, he spent time on the city council. You know, he's been a chaplain. You know, he, he's done, he's done those different things that I think that, when you add it all together, here's a person that is not only well-rounded, but a person that has life experience, and, and that's why I ranked him higher than, than, than Mr. Nally.
Okay.
He does have, he does have aquatic experience.
Mr. Gerber?
Correct.
Yes, he was.
He was a certified pool operator.
Oh, well, see, you know what? Thank you for correcting me on that.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, as well as...
Was he the one that was a swimmer as a kid?
He was.
Yeah, so, okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Wendy.
But he also mentions that he was part of the Northwood Beach Park and Recreation Board as well.
Yeah.
So, just, I mean...
Yeah, thank you very much, actually.
As far as my feelings with Patrick Nally and Eric Gerber, Patrick Nally, if you hire a coach and stuff, he's perfect. Won't fault him, I mean, he's perfect for that, but he doesn't have the all-around experience, whereas Eric, you know, has worked here. He has been a lifeguard, he has been a certified...
Pool operator.
Operator, thank you. And also, he's done public administration. He's got in front of them talking, in front of city council and stuff like that.
Yes.
He's had to sit there and get in the public and sit there and talk different things, and not just about being a coach. Being a coach, hey, it's cheer you up, come over here, these are the right reasons why you need to come here, let me butter you up, make you feel good. And, as, but as far as, with the city council, you don't always talk to people who agree with you.
That's true.
Totally, and I think something like that there is what we really need to look at, is who are we gonna have here in order to build this place up? And this pool is very important. I will never sit there and say a s- I will never sit there and say it's not. But under the same aspect, we're not looking for somebody who only knows pool knowledge. We also have a dog park over there that has no maintenance that's been done to it, or extremely little. We have baseball fields over there that need something done to them. So, we need somebody who's more rounded than just the pool. That's all I got, and sorry I interrupted.
No, you didn't interrupt. I don't think, and I will say, Mustafa was, you know, in my top five, and I've, no one else agrees, so I'm kicking him out. Eric is the next guy on my list, so he's now in my top five, so...
Well, we've discussed the candidates.
And it's like...
So, with the exception of Boyce, that's the only one that was up there that we haven't discussed.
Right.
Well, let's talk about Mr. Jeffries.
Wow.
He's a California Director of the Park and Rec.
Long time.
Long time, 20-plus years, I believe.
Yeah, 27.
27, correct.
Took it from nothing to, wow.
I actually understood why there was a book. With all the articles and stuff in the paper and stuff.
Kind of like the Olympic signature.
I saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I was kind of like, okay, that could have been left out.
I liked it.
I didn't.
So, but anyway.
Why did I, how did I think this?
I gave him really high marks on a lot of things, based on that experience and based on... There are some assumptions in there in terms of level of involvement of things like fiscal planning and grant write, you know, grant write, fundraising, grant writing. I would have admittedly, so by the same thing that I said about another candidate, I would have liked to have seen more detail about that process. As a, especially if there is going to be a book there. It would be, it would be nice to see more about that process, but, sorry, that's... But otherwise, based on the level of experience, I scored him very well.
And my problem with him was because he didn't, he did have, just like you said, he had this book, but he didn't tell us how many people he supervised. I had no idea whether he's one of those guys who is director of parks, but he doesn't have people working for him. You know, he said, I supervise blah, 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 but he didn't tell me how many. And then, I didn't know how much he's dealing with the public and customer service. I didn't know how much fiscal planning and budget billing he's doing. And so, you know, for, that's why he scored middle of the pack for me. And so, it's like, but he did, he has all this great experience, and I did not hold it against him that he's from California.
Ew. Someone at the table is too, by the by. Ew.
For the record, Sean and I are from Indiana.
Oh, gosh, yeah, no one knows that.
The wife, however, was born in San Jose.
There we go.
So, anyway, so we have, we've talked about Boyce. Anything further about Mr. Jeffries? I thought it was impressive. I think the man did some wonderful things in Galt. I've been to Galt. Yes. And that's, that's all we need to say about Galt.
Have you seen their aquatic...
What part of California is it in?
No, it's the Central Valley. No, I was there for, that's where I went to the fire academy. So, CDS Fire Academy is there, so that's where I went to my academy. However, he had 27 years of dedicated service to the city there and did some amazing things, so you're right, that was impressive.
What I heard with Jeffries, you know, he scored very well with me. And there's a lot of stuff I liked what he did, because he's worked with, you know, the city management, where he taught the city council and stuff like that. And so, and again, he's more well-rounded and stuff like that. So, he scored very well. And the salary has been put out what it's making on the advertising, so I think we're running into a problem with it.
My concern with that is though, we don't have it in the budget to bring somebody in like we did last time.
No, we don't.
We just do not.
We can cross that bridge when we get there.
Right, yeah. The other, so just in the interest of balance, the probably, well, the reasons why he scored the lowest with me were, you know, I kind of went middle of the road with fiscal planning. But, and the other thing was, when I looked at, just to clarify, when I looked at, and this is for everyone, experience with a government organization, I kind of gave more points for Washington than non-Washington and federal. Because while we understand that the regulations are different, but to me, it was kind of a, there's a better understanding and less of a learning curve. And I felt like that, for me personally, that was a consideration. So, that was one thing that... As well, similar to our previous process, it appears from this that the Park and Rec Department reports to the city, which we know to be a different arrangement, and has more support than a special purpose district, as well as, I mean, just, and these are all the things I thought about. As well as, there is less complexity, right? I can pick up the phone and call this person to do this thing, as opposed to, we are self-supporting in that respect. It's not a knock, it's just, I, those are things I thought about when I read this. Anyway.
Commissioner Hoffmeier, any last parting words?
I'm listening.
Okay. So, we have down to three, and we have our three. We mentioned taking five forward, if there's not another motion.
I would like to make a motion that we limit the number of interviews to four, and that Eric Gerber be added to the list of three for the interviews to be given October 6th, 2015.
So, we have a motion for four interviewees going forward with Eric Gerber to be the fourth on October the 6th. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Discussion. No discussion.
Well, I suppose it, I suppose it depends on... Thank you for recognizing me after I was already talking, sorry about that. Yeah. But, I know. If our process, I'm trying to be thoughtful in terms of how I say this, but I'm... I feel it would be a shame not to include Mr. Jeffries personally in that process. If we believe that, if we don't find the right person, that we may go back to the pool, as it were. No pun intended, but I'll take it. But if we don't, if, you know, if we're going to send this person a rejection letter, then I will, I will not support this. Just, but I just, I feel like we're missing out if we don't at least take the time to talk to this person.
And I agree with that, because I do think he scored, you know, very high. And, you know, I realize it's probably a Skype interview that we have to do, which phone interviews are never very great. But under the same circumstance, if he is the person that is more qualified, we feel, than everybody else, I think we need to give him a chance at that. So, I agree with you.
I do too.
Okay. Actually, I agree with that as well.
Okay.
Do you want to modify?
Yeah.
Amend.
Amend.
I would like to amend the motion that we include, that we, let's see, that we extend the invitation to five individuals to include Eric Gerber and Boyce W. Jeffries.
So, the amended motion would be to have five people go forward for the interviews on October the 6th, with, including Boyce Jeffries and Eric Gerber as the last two, correct?
Yes, yes.
Do I have a second?
I have a second, go ahead.
Who's taking that second?
Commissioner Shingleton. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. So, we have our five set for the sixth. All right. Hold on, don't start packing up anything. Score sheets, all of this, if you, don't anybody throw anything out before we move any forward. All of this is public record, we have to keep it. So, if you wrote notes on anything, you know, made notes on any of the resumes or anything else, then we have, it's all included as public record, so just as a reminder for the board. Thank you. Moving forward on the sixth. We're going to do that at Skagit Valley College, since we have Mr. Jeffries, who is out of state. We will do Skype interviews to level the playing field, so nobody has an unfair advantage.
Do we have to?
Yes. No, wait, no, no, we don't. If you want to make, if you want to make a motion and to change the process, you can do that. You know.
Mr. Chair, I move that we conduct in-person interviews with local candidates and that we Skype with any out of the area candidates or anyone who's out of the area on, for the interviews to be conducted on September 6th.
October 6th?
October 6th, did I say?
So, yes, so we have a motion to do in-person interviews for all those that can make it with Skype interviews for those that can't on October the 6th. Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Discussion.
No.
I will, I will...
The only question I've got with this here is, we were going to meet at the library in order to do the Skype interview.
The college. Right, yes, sir.
If we do interviews at the college, is there a private room there?
Yes, that's the room we do at.
It's very private.
Okay. I'm good with it, that's, that was my only question.
Are we paying for that room, again? We paid for it.
Much more private than this. It's like classroom.
So, back to the discussion on the motion on the floor. The chair, the chair has concerns about this. As somebody that unfortunately regularly hires a large amount of candidates, granted that they're all firefighters, however, we always level the playing field. So, if I have one person that's outside the area, either we do it by phone or we have them all show up. And I personally don't like the disparity, because I think it gives an unfair advantage to somebody who's sitting in front of us than somebody who's on a Skype, because the Skype, you can't see us all clearly, you know? There's five of us sitting around at the table and a very small camera on top of a computer. And so, my concern is that it is a disadvantage for the one person at the Skype. I feel that it's not a level playing field, but that's my, just my personal concern, so...
And I, I understand, I understand what you're saying. I just... Personally, in terms of judgment, I mean, it's, you know, and rather, evaluation, let's call it that. In terms of evaluation, I don't feel like it would matter. And I think for ease of process, that's really part of it for me. It's not about having the person at the table, it's about all the technical difficulties. And we did have so much time. And I feel, it's really about, if it, in some cases, is going to take less time to have the person drive there than it is for us to actually get them on and see them and whatever. I think that's where I was, that's my thing, is I feel like I can be objective about it. If we feel that there are larger concerns around that, I understand that, and I can support that.
Okay. Thank you. Further discussion?
No, I've done live interviews and I've done phone interviews. And the same with, like you were saying, Sean. Whenever I sit there and did the interviews, I made sure they were done the same way. So, it was the people outside, you know, that I did phone interviews, but under the same circumstance. He can get, has the opportunity to sit there and make it. And I know it's not cheap going from California. But under the same circumstance, if he chooses to do a Skype interview, then I'm good with that. I think I can go with the way.
He's making the choice at that point himself.
Yes.
Yeah, and we did, we did interviews and it was like, the people that were local, we talked to face to face. And I don't think, I understand what you're saying, but it's like, I don't think they were disadvantaged. They got the same questions, because we all asked the same questions of each one. They answered, and I was like, I'm listening to them talk. And we, this was before Skype, and so, we weren't seeing anybody's faces. We were listening to their voice over a speakerphone. And it's like, it was, maybe intel analysis is different, but anyway. I didn't, I didn't think they were disadvantaged by, they were disadvantaged that we knew the other people, because they were there. But, I mean, you know, they were already in our command, but...
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All against?
Nay.
Nay. So, we have to do a roll call vote. Commissioner Hoffmeier?
Aye.
Commissioner Shingleton?
Aye.
Commissioner Pierce?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward?
Holly.
Holly, I got it right the first time. Yes, thank you. So, the vote, the motion passes, we will do an in-person for those local, and we'll do the Skype if somebody chooses not to be local. That being said, the next process is for next week. If everybody can send three questions. In the past, what we've done is a half an hour interview with two questions per commissioner. If everybody could send three questions to me, and the reason I ask for three is that way, if I get two that are the same, I can throw one out. If you can send three questions to me prior to Sunday, the... Come on.
That's the fourth?
Fourth, yep, that's the fourth. So, prior to...
So, like sometime on...
1500 on the 4th, 3:00 PM on the 4th, sorry.
I will try, I'm not sure if I will be able to do that, but I'll try.
What would, would you be able to do it by?
I'm going out of town.
You are.
Right. I will do my best.
Okay. Totally understand. Thank you. So, if, we'll get what we can by then, and then I will set up the room for the interviews. And I will email the candidates who have moved on and times for that day.
What are you going to make the time slots, as far as a half hour?
A half hour, 10, half hour with 10 minutes in between, so that we can discuss. Is, are there any, any points on that? Yes, ma'am.
I just have an additional question. The folks who will not be moving forward...
We'll see if an email as well.
Okay, from you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Would you like to review before I send it out?
No, 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 I just wanted to be sure. I know that there was a question in terms of receipt and acknowledgement of receipt. And I just want to be sure that these people feel that they have...
Figure if I do it...
Taken care, right, that, just that they feel that they were respected as part of this process, that we appreciate it.
Are there objections to the chair sending out emails?
Thank you.
No, thank you all.
Yeah, thank you for doing that.
And so, the 10-minute discussion, it's, I assume you remember, we can't, because we're not in session, we can't discuss what we think of them, but what, what can you discuss?
You can discuss qualifications only.
Oh, okay. Oh, and not whether it's...
Right, and it's more, more, it's not so much... Exactly, clarification on what we heard, but remember, we can't talk about rankings or anything else in between candidates. That's a very good point. And it's also used as a buffer, so we don't have candidates bumping into each other at the door, that's...
Fabulous.
I believe, am I mistaken in, I believe we talked about perceived strengths and weaknesses. Is that accurate? I don't remember, and so, maybe I'm assigning that to something else.
I don't remember.
Based on that, okay, okay. Then it's something else.
Maybe that's clarification of qualifications.
It's the next step in here. That's what I see.
No, ranking.
Are there any further comments or questions for the city?
The only question I got as far as with all this information that we have, is there a file that they keep it here at the pool?
We will, we will have at the next regular scheduled meeting. We will turn it in to the director, interim director, and the interim director will have to create a file to keep it, yes.
Thank you.
Because I still have the stuff from the last session, no one ever took that stuff from me.
That interim director should have taken that.
She did not know that.
So, can we, if you have stuff left, please bring it in. We need to do that for that one also. Yes, no, that's good. Because that's district property, and unfortunately, we...
No, I think it's good that it's kept somewhere.
Public records are... Public records request and all, and for the OPMA, that's transparency, so.
No, absolutely.
I was just going to contribute to ask for final stuff. I'm really excited about this process. I'm super excited. I am, I am. I'm really excited. Like, this is really, I'm, yeah, it's great.
Okay.
Final comments from the board? Commissioner Shingleton is very excited.
Her face is all red.
It, it always is.
That's true, you told me that.
Any further comments? I need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, please.
I have a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Meeting's adjourned at 7:57.